Okay, we're gonna call the Select Board Meeting for Order on Thursday, November 9th at 7:00 PM for Agenda Approval, Approval of the Minutes of 10:1917. Warrants, Mail, The Administrative Assistance Report, Road Formers Monthly Board Meeting, All Business Senior Citizens Group billed out article, Boulder Approval Appropriations, Discontinued Roads, Large Gathering Ordinants, First Read, Set the Date for Work Session, Town Administrator Job Description, Personnel and Policy Revisions, and Legal. Which Budget?
I move to approve the Agenda.
Second.
Anything to be added, folks? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Prove the Minutes of 10:1917. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions or nays?
Set it.
Warrants. I'm gonna set that there just so I don't tip it over. I hope not.
We'll work on that.
Ooh, this fell out of something. Okay. Pownell Payroll, ending 10/27/17, in the amount of $6,243.18. Pownell's Payroll Report, ending 11/3/17, in the amount of $6,985.94. Okay, payroll ending 11/10/17, in the amount of $7,402.65. Because we have enough, can I get a motion to approve the payroll?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Just because there's some big ones in this thing here, and somebody might wanna talk about. Accounts Payable, ending 10/27/17, in the amount of $16,100.30. There's the Health Insurance, which is $5,500, close to, Green Mountain Power, $1,800, Beamers, $2,300, and the IRS, $2,200. There's most of it. Okay. This one is Accounts Payable, ending 11/3/17, in the amount of $11,926.61. This has the VCRC for $22.99, has Green Mountain Power for $2,640, has IRS for $2,526. Those are the big ones. Yeah, this one is Accounts Payable, ending 11/10/17, in the amount of $49,412.32. There's a tax refund of $2,741, given to one person. There was Peckham Materials delivery to the townyard, I think it was Coast Cola, for The People Bank was paid $2,700, that was the truck payment for down at the treatment plant, TAM, $3,973 for the stuff they haul out of our transfer station. Then, there was one for $2,325.94 for Van Bell Tech. I'm not sure what that one's, you know what that one is?
What is the name?
B-A-N-E-T-I-K.
Treatment Plant.
It's Treatment Plant. And then there's the Barney Construction, and this is the larger one, was for $20,625, and I assume that was for the finishing of Mount Anthony Road.
Sand.
Sand, okay.
You know that Van Tech one, if there's a M in front of it, that's a tax refund. If there's an M out in front of it.
Oh, it's an M.
Okay, that's a tax refund.
Okay. And then there IRS for $2,628.
There were a lot of, there's a number of tax refunds, and there will be for a little bit.
Yeah, I would say if you add it up, all the small ones.
We've been doing it, we've been doing some tax refunds, probably about three weeks now.
Okay, some warrants. Mail.
We need a motion.
Need a motion to approve accounts payable.
So moved.
Thank you, Andy.
Second.
Any discussion on any of them? All those in favor say aye.
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 We have a concerned citizen that has wrote us about the fact where we're talking about tearing down the building on the property the town is falling in, that there are some interior doors that were stored in there from the Bartow Lodge, and he's recommending that we save them somewhere. Somebody look at those and make your determination.
I looked at them doors, them doors are all odd sized, and cost you more than make a casing to put them in, and the doors are worth.
Tom Shuey also looked at them. I looked at them.
They're worth saving?
If somebody wants them, I'd give it to them, but I don't think.
If you're restoring antique houses, I guess it'd be worse.
And the glass in some of them are regular glass, it's not even.
It's not even lead glass, or anything?
We could put them in the warehouse.
How many are there?
Good 15, 20, probably.
Doors in there?
They're all stacked this way and all stacked that way. They come out every closet now.
I hear you, Joe, and I know we moved a lot of stuff into the school down there to save and the rest, and we ended up only paying to get rid of them again.
Put them down the warehouse, the bottom's gonna rot. We don't use them, so.
So we're better off just including them in the cost of the removal when the people tear it down?
If they're inside, they'll take it, I'm sure.
Aye.
My concern is, I was over there when Tom went over, and I really don't think we need to be walking around in there, it's very unsafe. And Tom was heavy, and I mean, we were fearful about going through.
So there's a concern about injuries, too.
Yeah, well, if there's just as much.
I'm hearing the consensus of the board, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that we just.
Get rid of it.
With the demo, just.
Let it all go.
And the only thing I suggest with the demo is fill in it when you get done.
Okay.
It's gonna leave a hole in the lower side.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay. Any other comments?
I think that's it, it's in the bid spec, I think, right?
I think it is.
Okay.
And well, can I, can we talk about the bid spec at the same time?
Not this time, I think they're actually on our list somewhere.
Just have a question after, alright.
Yeah, there's a, somewhere in here, there's a, there's actual bid spec, so. Okay, this is a grant for, looks like the road, from Joel Burrington. Category, Road Erosion Inventory, VCRC will conduct an inventory, work will be done using protocol as designed for the Municipal General Road Committee. There's a hydraulic segment. The grant that's being asked for is $8,000, our local match will be $1,600. What's your pleasure? Do you wish to apply for this grant?
Yes.
Need a motion?
I make a motion when you file for the grant.
Get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Did everybody get to see the letter that he wrote to the person that was unfortunate to have their trash on the road, and did they did? Everybody in agreement?
Yes.
Thanks. Will we send it?
We've already sent it.
I believe. So it's just information. Okay, this is Town of Pownell Financial Audit Request. This is where we had asked them to make sure they would do a presentation to the selectmen. That's this one. Make sure I get the right one in front of me that I'm talking about. And basically, they have agreed to attend one board meeting and discuss it. With that done, everybody get a chance to read where they put it, added it to the contract. Can I get a motion to approve the contract so we can have our auditors do our audit?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Now, at the same time, we asked the auditing group to give us a quote for auditing the town clerk's area. And did everybody get a chance to look at this? They're saying that they can do this for between $2,000 to $3,000. And if you're in agreement, I need a motion to sign that so it can get done.
So moved.
Get a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'm requesting permission, we have a request in the Treasury to attend a Nimmer Seminar. As you know, in the past, we asked, last few meetings ago, we asked that everybody ask us first so that we would know what they're attending. Everybody in agreement to let this person do that?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We have a letter from our web person that's talking about the possibility of doing other things on our website, and it's to do with links that could be put on it for Pownell Businesses or sites, things to do, or places to go. She talks about this being integrated into the site, and could be a database that people would simply click on some link and go to where they're gonna look at what it is. She's also asked about the positive articles that we find on the, to be put on the website, like, well, we just put the boat on for the town, and other things that we might see like that, where people went out and picked up Indian Massacre Road, notices like that, and those things there, I was okay, and I said okay. I just would like to have the board also as a whole agree on things like this, if that's what you wish to do.
Yeah.
The board in agreement that the website should go on that manner, so people can find things easier?
Yeah, I think anything we can do to improve it is, is a blog site, I would support.
Well, if you see anything that goes up that you don't like, make sure you let me know and let her know, and we'll.
Is somebody gonna oversee it some way or another?
Yeah, well, the citizens, if they, if somebody sees something I hear.
She only puts on what we agree to.
Yeah, so basically, she contacts one of us first, to say, yeah, your name. And any board member that sees something that they dislike up there, let us know, and we can let her know, and it can be taken down right away. Okay? But this here, everybody's in agreement to go forward with?
And I just wanna remind everybody, when they have something, not to forget to put it on. I know she waited for the results of the election the other night, and we forgot to call.
It was the next, it was the following day that it got put up, after the newspaper had already put it out.
Yeah, she usually waits up late at night waiting for somebody to call, but.
Yeah, I got a lot of calls that night. Okay, Route 7 Trees, I don't know how many people have been hearing about this, but I've got a couple calls, and one of our citizens also is the voice of concern, and as you've read in this document that's in front of us, and Bill Bosso has also been notified, and is talking to people to see what can be done with the, with the company to try and clean this up.
I think we should explain, it's just not the Route 7 trees, it's where the Green Mountain Power cut down all the trees to put the power lines.
A lot of them times, those trees are on somebody else's property.
Right.
And they have to get the okay to take them on, so.
Right.
Before we get involved, somebody ought to check into this.
I think, I think if we just send a letter expressing a safety concern, it'd be fine. I'm surprised the state has allowed it, 'cause you know, just recently, they're dragging the trees down over the banks, and people are cutting up the firewood.
Yeah, from what I've been hearing, the state police has also been telling people to move on because of the safety, because where they're parking to get these is not always that visible.
Mm-hmm.
And so it's major safety hazard is what it is.
And they didn't cut the trees small enough for the landowners to take them away themselves, unless they get up there and cut those great big long poles.
Green Mountain doesn't do that, they contracted help.
Yeah, well, that's, that's what it said here, that he's talking, well, this is Bill.
He called.
He contacted Green Mountain Power Government Affairs Person over the weekend, and he told me he would talk to the tree company. So basically, he's waiting for an answer from the tree company that actually did the cut, and maybe we can get more information on this. But from a Select Board point of view, what the person was asking is whether we would write a letter or some sort of memo to Green Mountain Power, letting them know and voicing our concern for the safety of our citizens that are trying to stop along the road, or other people that are, and our citizens might run into. So it's up to you guys, whether you think we should be sending a letter, or.
Well, Bill Bosso thought that it would help if we did.
Yeah, I agree. But.
Can't hurt.
I make a motion to send him a letter expressing a safety concern, and.
We've had numerous complaints from concerned citizens about people's safety.
Okay, and that would go to Green Mountain Power, because they're the people that's responsible?
Right.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Someone second?
Did you second?
I'll second it.
Okay, and draft something up, Linda, if you wanna run it by, I'll do my best on it. Okay, moving on. Telephone Upgrade. We've been asked by the person that's doing our telephone work to upgrade it, to add a new phone number to be used for automated attendant, and there's a reoccurring cost added to our line charge, $24.95 a month, and associated tax and fees to have a new number added. What's your pleasure?
What's the point of another number, is there?
Is to be used as an automated attendant, and I'm not sure, can you describe what that is?
No, but basically, what I understand is, all calls will come to a main number and then be dispersed to the individual lines.
So that's just how the new system would work?
Mm-hmm.
So basically, this.
So you need another extra phone to do this?
Yeah, so it must be a number that's coming to, and then it's like a phone tree.
There has to be an 823 number to fit in with our numbers.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's not going to a specific number, and that, somebody has to answer it to answer it?
Nope, it's an automatic.
It's an automatic.
It's probably a phone tree thing.
Makes sense.
And then it will, yeah, you'll push one, or two, or three, or something.
So would we be doing away with the separate phone lines?
No.
No.
And you can also keep the same numbers, too, right?
That was the point of it. It's the only way it can work, Chuck, we've spent a lot of time trying to get that far with it.
Okay, so what's your pleasure, guys? Tell them to go ahead.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion, first? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes, nays?
I don't know.
You gonna abstain from this one?
I don't know.
That's an abstention.
It's the only way that it can work.
Technology, honey, technology.
Yeah, that's.
I don't know, that's it. Is that the new number? I don't know.
Yeah, nobody will know that number.
Yes.
Nobody will know that number, because it's just gonna go there automatically, and then say, pick its one from the phone tree, probably. So Ronnie, is that a, you're not gonna vote either way?
I'm gonna abstain, I don't know anything about it.
Yeah, okay.
That's what I'm trying to say.
All right.
I don't know anything about it, so.
Okay. We have a flyer from Mount Leagues of Cities and Town Municipal Road Management for Decision Makers Workshop.
That one's from Mount Palya, I think, isn't it?
I don't know, I didn't look.
Yes, it is.
Yes, yes.
That's the day of the big snowstorm.
Yeah, it could be.
You can let us know on that. We have a delinquent tax cell coming up with our, from our delinquent tax collector. There's a tax cell scheduled for December 6, 2017, at 10:00 AM at the town office. There is at this time, three parcels. We need to appoint a board member to attend and represent the Town of Pownell, December 6. Who's gonna be in town that day? You wanna represent us, Ronnie, or?
What day of the week is it?
Should be Wednesday.
Wednesday? I probably could show up.
Okay, so I take a motion to appoint Ronnie to represent our town?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Ron. Okay, Bennington County Sheriff Office Report.
Yes, Mr.?
Patrol for 26.5 hours this week, a week, I should say, because this is for September 1st through September 30th. They handled a total of 35 calls, two 911 hangups, two agency assists, two public assists, one burglary alarm, one agency assist fire rescue, two motor vehicle complaints, four bin verifications, two directed patrols all over town, people, and 17 traffic stops. Five tickets were written, 12 written, and verbal warnings were given.
Remind me, the report that comes with that, it goes in, in the?
Bills.
Bills?
Yeah.
I usually pull it and put it in the mail.
Yeah, would you do that from now on?
Agenda, Thursday, November 16, this is the VCRC's meeting they're having at Brown Cowal CAF, Regional Prevention Partnership Grant. There'll be a health initiative, Medicaid, and trail improvements, and what else? This is their standard monthly meeting, I guess, and it's on Thursday, November 16, starts at 5:30, ends at 7:45 PM at the Brown Cowal CAF. If you're interested, you should let the VCRC know, 'cause it looks like there'll be some food there. There's a meeting, 59th Annual Meeting at the Bennington County Industrial Corp., will take place on Wednesday, November 5th, at the Bennington Museum. We hope you will join us at 4:00. They're gonna talk, they're gonna actually have a guest speaker, Manchester Town Manager John O'Keefe, doing the keynote address. If you wish to have tickets or additional information, there's a number that you can contact or go to BCIC website. I'm sure if you go to the Bennington County Regional Commission, you have a link to it, 'cause this came from the VCRC. This is the VCRC agreement that we talked about for the planning grant to do the town plan. Everybody had a chance to look through this agreement. It basically is $11,250, but it'll be billed out of it quarterly.
Isn't that the one we're taking from the capital fund? I'm pretty sure that's what the minutes said before.
That's what they came and asked us for that night.
Yeah.
So we already approved it, we're just gonna.
Yeah.
Motion to sign it, I make a motion to sign it.
I'll second it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Abstentions, nays? Ayes have it?
Aye, yep, aye, duh. We were.
It's a mail. Administrative Report.
I worked with Paul Gillies via the email on the discontinued road process, hopefully that might save in the legal expense associated with this process.
What's our next, I'm sorry, Linda, but what's our next step with that?
Can I finish?
Oh.
I was gonna say, it's in your packet, too.
Okay. I guess I missed it.
Okay, let me see, I'll start over. Worked with Attorney Paul Gillies via the email on discontinued road process. Mr. Gillies will assist the town right through to the written decision process. It's been an interesting learning experience thus far, and we'll talk more about it later in the meeting, 'cause it is an agenda item. Gave Tom Shuey a list of items we need to do to winterize the office. Hopefully, he's gonna get started on some of the items this weekend. A claim was filed with our insurer for an incident that happened on Peaks Pine Road. Resident drove their vehicle over a culvert screen in a signed work area and suffered damage to their emergency brake cable. Bill Scully met with me to review the net metering accounts. We have eight accounts that will be receiving electric credits from the hydro generation. We will review the accounts again in six months. Due to the hydro just going online, there's a fluctuation back and forth. So far, we've, we've seen two billing periods. First one, we got some credits, the second one, we didn't. And so they have the ability to make adjustments as we go along. Bill is hoping board members will be coming to his recommissioning ceremony on November 11. The building to be demolished has gone out to bids, bids are due November 15th at 4:00 PM. Tom Shuey removed the household hazardous waste. Did you have a question on the bid?
Yeah, was it on the website? I didn't see it. It's on the website, good.
I'm sure Jim posted it.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah, and I, because we had a conversation about to try to remember to take items down after the bid due date, so, you know, and I explained to you that everybody's trying to still get used to using the website.
Yeah, it's hard, because it's all new to us.
To try to remember that it's available, so I think, I think everybody's done well because we've only been on since the end of September, or something like that.
I've only heard good things about it.
Yep.
But the thing, I guess, I would like to do for bids, we get bids, and we get the pricing for the bids, and we award, I would like, before we take it down, to outline what our bids were, and the one we took.
Oh, okay, we could do that, yep.
So people see it on the web, because they know we've sent out the bid, but we do this on the air, it would be nice, it was on the website, to say, we had three bidders, this was what the bid is, and this is who we took.
It is stated in the minutes, but we can do that.
Yeah.
And I can make it over there. So you want a bid tabulation?
Yeah, it's just, it's just to let people know that they're bidding, I'm sure they go back and check.
I think that's something you were doing for us, anyway.
Yeah, just now this is a matter, put it on there.
Thanks.
Okay, so we can move it up. Uh, let's see, oh. VCRC has requested a special meeting with the board on Thursday, December 7th, to present the Hoozick River Corridor Study. Their consultant will be attending and giving a PowerPoint presentation. The VCRC has requested to use the school library. Is this doable? And they asked if we could start at 6:00.
What day is the 7th?
Thursday night. He's gone over a number of dates with the consultant, trying to come up with something.
Give it to me one more time, Thursday night, at December 7th, at what time?
6:00, I'm putting it out there, 6:00.
6:00 PM?
6:30, what?
Yeah, what do we want?
I don't know what people can do.
Is that gonna be okay?
Is it okay with the school?
Well.
They're, they're taking care of dealing with the school. They wanted to have it down at the public library, but I don't, I don't think they were able to get the night.
Is the presentation on what again, I'm sorry?
Hoozick River Corridor.
Hoozick River Corridor.
Yeah, we went there for one once before.
It will take probably, he said, 45 minutes to an hour to give the presentation.
Yeah, we've been through, when they did the flood.
Yes.
When we had to tell them a pipe was landing where it was for years. Ronnie?
Actually, Joel, maybe something you might wanna go to, if you had to do things with it.
I went to one of the meetings, and they talked about, there was a discussion on Lad, Lad Brook and Tubbs Brook.
Yes, yes.
The two key, key.
Yes, I have the report on it. So is this about streams, or about our river corridor?
The river corridor.
Which is streams?
It is streams, the whole thing, the waterway.
Which, which the concern is those two streams right there affecting?
That feeding.
That affect.
Lad and Tubbs.
And Tubbs are the two with biggest concern.
Okay, so it's the feeds as well, okay.
So I would suggest also that, that you attend also, if you can, it'd be good for you to, 'cause there's definitely some, some money available there to do some work.
So let me ask the question, does anybody have any trouble with the 7th, December 7th date, first off? If not, at 6 o'clock time? If not, at six o'clock timetable?
I'm thinking, six-thirty, what time is that?
Six-thirty? Six.
Six is great.
Six, am I hearing six?
That's what they, that's what they asked for, right?
You make it at six.
Sure.
They asked for it, sure.
We'll let him know. Because we need to book that. That's basically it for my report, but let's talk about some upcoming agendas. On the sixteenth, next week's the sixteenth. The, the panel rec task force wants to come in and talk about a trail grant. Victor Maloney from Southwestern SBSU Safety Coordinator needs to come in. He wants to talk about, um, panel school emergency evacuation plan to the Panel Valley Fire Department. I guess the board has to sign off.
Yeah.
Okay? And I thought we'd see how far we got through this evening on the large gathering ordinance, because we could, next meeting, adopt it and move forward with the process.
At that point, yeah.
Depending on how far we get, otherwise, you know, can go another week. I know our goal basically is to get it all in place, so we're all set for upcoming move season.
Okay, but the sixteenth, you're talking about the rec and you're talking about the safety?
Mm-hmm, so there's like three things right there.
Yeah. And we, we're also?
We've gotta do the town administrator job description and?
Policy.
Policy.
Okay, so the next week, we have Thanksgiving on the, the November thirtieth is wide open.
Is that a warehouse?
It's a Thursday.
Is that a warehouse?
It's wastewater usually, but it's?
Thanksgiving would have been the treatment plant.
Okay.
So shoot for the thirtieth then?
That's why, in the, during the months of November and December, we do not go down to the plant because it falls on holidays.
Okay, so but the thirtieth?
And aren't we gonna have budget stuff to be working on soon, too?
We're gonna be starting that in December.
So, so if we did the thirtieth, let's put the thirtieth for the town administrator and the personnel policy, let's put it to bed.
Yeah, because I?
Just do those two things on that.
She's been calling me from the state, um, get back to her, we're paying that woman up there to help us and?
I'm not sure on that date if I'm gonna be able to make it. Schedule will be on vacation, I think I'm gonna be not going, so I'll have to let you know.
So next week is what?
The other thing, I think we gotta step back on the sixteenth, when the trails group comes in for the grant, can you invite Darcy to be here, please?
Okay.
Yes.
Make sure that she?
Is this, is this part of, like, some of the information that I gave you earlier? It involving some of it?
Yes, it does, yes, it does.
Alrighty, so we'll ask Darcy to attend. Okay, now we're gonna jump right into December. December seventh is gonna be the special meeting, okay? And tentatively, I would like to see the, uh, process for the discontinued roads to be on December ninth, which is a Saturday.
To go, take a look.
Nine o'clock in the morning. Get her done. So that's quite a few dates, we just threw out there, different things that we got coming up. And we'll work around some things as, you know, as we get there, but these are things that I just want you to be aware of that are coming up. Usually during about the end of Thanksgiving, the, the budget requests are gonna be distributed to all the various departments and the ballot article folks to get their budgets in.
Yep.
When do the ballot articles have to be in? Because we, we were talking about?
They're usually due the second week of, like, around the second week of December. I actually pay approved ballot articles from March, the third week in December, is when you'll see a large warrant come through.
So is that the part that we have to talk about the, um, clerk and changing the position and everything?
March, that'll be a ballot, that'll be a ballot article if you want, wish to run it in March.
Okay, so that doesn't have to be done on December second?
No, these are for people that are, are currently?
Okay.
Ballot articles. If they don't change the ballot article, the board's policy has been that they're automatically on for the following year.
Okay.
If they change it, they have to repetition.
Alright, so we'll still have time to talk about the other stuff?
As you're going through your budget process, then you start thinking about these things that the board wants to come for ballot articles. Okay, and we will have until January.
Okay.
So the thirtieth?
What I got, so the thirtieth, you might, Jason's up in the air on.
Okay.
Possibly, right?
Yep, let's go ahead and schedule it though. And that's for the, that is for the work session?
Yep.
On town administrator and the personnel policy?
Yes.
I have a suggestion to make on the personnel policy revisions. Could you do a note to our staff, town staff, asking if they have any, um, suggestions, concerns, comments on what we have right now, maybe any suggestions, things that, just maybe some input?
Yeah.
It could be a good opportunity for people to?
Two ways, what they see today and what they might wish to have in the way of support in the future.
Yeah.
Doesn't mean, it just gives us information for a job description.
Sure.
Just good feedback.
No, no, I'm talking about personnel policy. Not, not, not the job description.
I'd talk about both.
Okay, both is good, too, absolutely. Yep.
You know, ask them, ask them, you know, what they feel support could be better, or are they happy with it?
Sure.
And then what they think about the personnel policy and give them this, uh, Vermont Leagues of Cities and Town policy and see what they think.
Let your folks know about that.
Yeah, to actually take, yeah, take a copy over and mark it up, bring it back to us. That, that helps us. Okay. That's the thirtieth. Okay. Anything else, Linda?
No.
Come on up.
Good evening. I don't know where that came from.
I just put it there so you can have it.
That's the personnel policy.
Yep. Need more, we can print more copies.
Okay.
Or we can just copy that, I guess.
Missed all you guys last week.
You did.
Were you sitting here all by yourself?
Yes.
Nobody called you?
I, I already read it, so. Last month, uh, road grading, we're always, we just did some yesterday, trying to get some of the rough spots before, we can't anymore. Uh, we shouldered the roads on the new blacktop. Doing more ditching, fifteen hundred yards, sand in the warehouse. County road, um, I had Lee Morrison with his bulldozer and roller, and we went up, we drew some gravel up and they went up quite a ways and, and bulldozed it and rolled it after, put some calcium chloride, came out pretty good. Hopefully it'll hold, hold up. Had a lot of complaints on that. We put the bricks and the pavers down with the people's name on it.
Thank you so much, you guys did a great job.
Is there a picture on the website of that?
Nope. Who knew? Could've done it years ago.
I know.
Who knew?
Storm damage, of course, we had a lot of trees and brush. We were out from, pretty much Sunday night, well, right through the night, some of us on that.
Did we get a lot of that with that winter? I know the upper part of the state really got clobbered, but we got?
We got?
I was out of town as well.
We, uh, I started getting calls at eleven-thirty and they just never, couple of us out, we're out till four, and I called a couple other guys in at four, and they kept going from there.
Do we have a lot of powerages in town, too?
Yes. Yeah, we did. We did the surveys on Snake Hill Road. We also did a survey of our pit in Stromeyer Pit.
Oh, good.
So, um, the Snake Hill Road Survey, um, it, that was just for, to get an idea what the drop is from the road down and, um, kinda put together an estimate. Uh, next week, I'll have, I think, four more grants for you guys to sign, various, um, that's one of them. That'll be a pretty good sized one, and with budget talks, we'll have to talk about, um, our twenty percent on that. We're currently working on it, uh, that one's due the twenty-second, but on a Wednesday, so I'd like to get it ready for next Thursday. It's your regular meeting to have you look at it and sign it. Well, it's gonna be the grant, whether you accept it or not. Then we have some?
When you're applying for the, the grant, are you gonna have anything ready for us to tell us what you're doing there in a way of repair? Or are you, that, or is this grant supposed to do that?
Not yet, uh, we have ideas. We, this grant covers engineering, the surveying, um, with this grant, uh, it's federal monies. We have to have somebody manage the grant, which, uh, the VCRC is gonna do for a fee. And they don't really like the towns managing their own grants on that kinda money.
Because that way there, it puts us into the single audit situation, such was the case with the treatment plant facility and all that.
Yep.
So, they kinda take care of all that. So that's, by next Thursday, we do kinda have a general plan, um, everything has to be put out to bed, including the engineer. So I may not use the guy we just had to do the survey and stuff. It depends who comes in, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Alright. I just wanted to know how far along we were with the actual design, but it sounds like we're way away, yeah.
So that, that grant's due when?
The twenty-second of November, next Wednesday.
Alright, so you'll have time enough?
And we'll also have to commit to our percentage of that, too, right?
Well, you do, yeah, when you sign it, you do.
And I think that's important, we all know how much money we're talking about there, because it's substantial.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not a given, you know, everybody has to understand, we're not gonna jump right into doing the Snake Hill project until, you know what I mean? We don't know if we're gonna get the money or not.
Correct.
So, you know, let's not get all excited about it.
We're applying for a grant.
Yeah, we're getting a preliminary work done. So, after we get this done, if we don't get this one, we could?
Try for something else?
Yeah, yeah. It was a little too much for the better roads, they only pay up to sixty thousand. So, I went with a Vermont Alternatives, Vtrans Alternatives grant, and they'll pay up to three hundred. But if we did come up to there, you know, our twenty percent, sixty, so we have to, budget time.
Yep.
But we're not guaranteed we're gonna get it.
No.
Not to get all excited.
Be positive.
Well, I, I guess the, the thing we have to think about, again, we're talking about ballot and so forth. I have to look at the road, I know we have a bridge fund and we have a culvert fund. The real question is, do we have a capital fund in the roads that will allow us to plan for things like this? If we don't spend it the one year, we can keep it there until we do get the grant versus, you know, you return it every year, then we have to ask for it again.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, think about a capital fund for the road or something?
Yeah, yeah.
To be added.
That's a good idea, because we don't, you know, I'm always wondering where?
And at some point, it'd be nice, maybe with this engineer or somebody with VCRC, is to look at the next five years and look at some of the other projects we have, too, because
Well, this?
Potentially the Northwest Hill Project could be very, very costly also, and that?
All the reason for a capital fund for some road.
This is with a municipal general road permit. The first step was the culvert inventory. The second step is what I just gave you tonight, is for the road inventory, the conditions and, and stuff for the roads. So, when they get that done, they come up with a master plan, and they prioritize the, the worst spots. And we actually put together a plan, what we're gonna do. That's all part of the municipal, the road permit, yeah.
We gotta, we gotta think outside the box and be ahead of this.
Yep, yep. So?
Let's think about?
Our bridge deck, too, it's another.
Yeah, but we have bridge funds, we have a bridge fund.
But, is that, the state kinda comes in pretty heavy on that, don't they?
It's coordinated, and they vary anywhere from twenty percent down to five. In North Panel, we ended up with a five percent, because our rep at that time, Charlie Palmer, got that for us. So it really got reduced. But again, it makes a lot of difference how, how the state is with funds.
Mm-hmm.
At the moment, we know the state is having a shortfall, so.
But we really do need to do something, uh?
Something this.
Yeah.
Well, I think the one thing that, if it happens, will be infrastructure money, it's gonna seem to grow a little bit, where the rest of the stuff is not so much, so, maybe with some, again, I think we need to work with the state on that one.
Well, yeah, definitely, wanna get on bill, and I think he's been on to it.
Yeah.
I think we have a, a new person in the VCRC. We gotta get these people on the stuff.
Designated?
Yes.
Is your recommendation for a replacement of that bridge, or just a repair of that bridge?
They need a replacement deck anyhow.
Well, the reason why I say that is, is that we don't want, whenever we get high water, that, that becomes a dam because of the design.
Well?
If you look at the design in North Panel, you got more of an arch. You know, hydraulics will force everything to the middle if you have that arch, and it'll suck. So you won't end up with a dam. So, when they were talking to the state and they're doing the design work, you wanna think about?
If they're gonna do the whole?
Because if they're gonna do the whole thing, you might want just, you don't need much of an arch, but you need an arch.
But, the, yeah, that's something, we gotta kinda get on our people about?
It'll cost you more.
Well, I think that's, that was an example for Rebecca Dragon, when she gets on that committee for one of the projects that?
Yeah, because you have to get the points, and you get the points through the VCRC to put you up higher on the list.
That's right. And again, I think it's important, you know,
Yep.
That she knows, you know, some of the circumstances there, when we do that, when that project doesn't happen, that, you know, we have all those people over there that are kinda cut off from?
Well, you can start getting those points now, even before you do the job, because it's like the wastewater and the rest. You want all the points you can add up ahead of time, because if, if the bridge goes, for some reason, if you're close to the top, you can get bumped real quick. If you're at the bottom, takes a while. So, yeah, we just need to keep stirring on it.
We, we do need to keep stirring.
How do we, how do we make that, how do we con, how do we let Rebecca Dragon know about that? Is that something you can just touch base with her on, maybe?
Again, sure, sure, I can talk to her.
Yeah, she wants to know more about the bridge anyways.
Yes, Main Street Bridge.
In Panel, yeah.
How new?
We're getting the, well, we got the trucks ready for inspection, and got them inspected, and we're getting them ready for winter plows and make sure?
I saw a bunch of blades in the warrants.
No, I didn't get any blade yet.
Wasn't blades, I saw there, or was it?
No, Ribco was scarefire teeth for the greater, ripper teeth, they were. So the blades would be more than that.
Okay.
We cleaned some plugged culverts, uh, one was on the county road when we were doing the job up there at the elbow, it was plugged solid. So, they flushed that one out with a fire truck. Uh, Montgomery Road had one plugged solid, we flushed that one out. They actually?
Are we responsible for the one at the bottom of lad road that, with the state right away is there? Because I know that used to get a lot of sand and loaded up down there.
State usually ditches it. They do ditch.
I know it usually fills up and?
Yeah, yeah, they do take care of that one.
Okay.
Being right there.
I, I know you did a lot of work to get the water to run down.
To run down to it, yeah.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure it's not full by the time the water gets there, we end up just spilling over.
That's a, yeah, a hard thing anyhow, because it kinda goes uphill where they try to, you know, up over there. They're always kinda working on that and trying to get it to flow good. Back to ditching again, uh, we are, um? Back to ditching again, uh we are, um we removed, I put, one of the things to do this month, we removed the stumps, three or four of them on Lad and we removed a bunch of them on Sweet Road. The trees we caught. The stumps, they were, we cut the trees because they were right on the road. So we've been plucking them out, which is an easy, easy task. We did fix some of the rougher spots on the roads. He's been around, kind of touched grading here and there, just some of the hills being so dry, rippled up real bad after we graded.
Where does it come?
We're, yeah, putting the equipment under in the warehouse. We're not gonna use the tractors and the mowers and. So and we're doing the reimbursement, Linda and I are, for the grants that were, um I got, well, I gave her the one for Man Hill today. So we can submit that one and hopefully get a bunch more and do it all over again.
Yeah, I was letting Nelson know, we talked about it earlier, the um structures grant. As soon as we make our final payment next week to AM and I, we'll be getting that money.
We wanted to wait until the guardrails were in and we owe them fifteen thousand more.
I saw, I saw you guys out there working. I just didn't drive out there, but I saw.
They're done, yeah, they're done. So that project is complete. And it looks pretty good, actually.
It does look really nice, something like that.
Don't you, Ron? The aluminum culvert, didn't that look good?
Aluminum color.
The grass is all grown too.
It is, it is.
Joel, I have a question. Um you guys did a great job cleaning up around the warehouse. I think it looks great down there. But I noticed we don't have any signage down there.
We don't, I know that.
Shouldn't we put a sign on that building so they know it's ours? And also there's a car that's, even though we had to move the trailer out and that stock car that was sitting there, but cars have been parking there at night too. So maybe we could get a sign for the warehouse and then some other notification saying that they're not allowed to park there because it's town property.
Well, you actually allow people to park there to hike and stuff though. You gotta be careful what the sign is you put down because, yeah, they they hike the mountain. That's the place they park.
Yeah, and you know.
There's a club that parks there too.
I know, um.
It's your call, I guess. If you, in the winter with sand trucks and stuff, you don't want people.
And they don't, mainly because it's, you know, it's a lot of snow around and stuff. Somebody's not gonna park right away for what we.
Could you do a no overnight parking? Would that, would that work?
Yeah, that's reasonable.
Actually, that would, yeah.
I would, you know, put something on the side of the building that says Town of Pownell Warehouse, you know, a nice sign. And then you could put some things, no overnight parking type signs up.
So what's your pleasure there to put one of our round highway signs?
That actually would be nice, actually. You know, the Town of Pownell Highway Warehouse.
Because we have the regular signs.
For like the vehicles?
Like the sticker signs, yeah.
Can you get one bigger?
Unless you wanna do or have somebody paint one or however you wanna do it.
I think the girl that made the ones for this building here, was it Lucy? Was it Lucy?
Yeah, she did a good job.
They were pretty reasonable, I thought.
Yeah, really?
Yeah.
Decide how how big you wanted.
Yeah, yeah, I would just, yeah, put Town of Pownell Warehouse.
Put it over the walk-in door probably because the overhead door is so high.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, a little, just something so people know.
But that's what we were gonna do anyhow. I got a stick-on sign. We were gonna put one in the door because there is nothing down there.
Nothing there, yeah.
No.
And then a couple small in the parking lot on on posts, uh no overnight parking.
That's okay.
Do you usually do something like with a phone number in case anybody had to reach you or something or no? Next to the door?
They can, we could, but.
Well, I'm gonna say it's up on the webpage now where we can reach the highway.
Yeah.
Yeah, as long as it says Town of Pownell on it and they know we own it.
Report, you know, we don't have them in this value of fifty, sixty thousand here. It's only thirty-five hundred.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, yeah, I don't see, you know, having a number on every building, somebody runs up on every building. You know, if something happens, those buildings usually the firemen know right away anyways if it's a fire or anything. So it's, and by then you you're gonna know. Alright, okay, what else you got?
Okay, I was gonna get the guys some uniforms. We've had a lot of complaint complaints lately because we have been oiling the trucks and they're all oil and grease and black and they're ruining their clothes. I didn't get the prices yet. I'm gonna call around and see. My guess is probably ten dollars a week.
So you're gonna get the uniforms that you basically are.
You know, ten dollars per person, be fifty dollars a week.
They come, you use them, you throw them in a barrel, they take them away and you get new ones.
They launder them, yeah, yeah. There's a couple.
Like coveralls and stuff or?
Well, you can do whatever you want. It gets more expensive, but we do. I've had them for a long time. It's eleven dollars a week per person, but we have eleven pairs. So if we went with eight pairs, then it'd be eight dollars a week. So like a dollar a pair a week. But they only wash five.
So it's pants and shirts and jackets too or no?
Yeah, you can get the, yeah.
Do they have reflectors on them and stuff so safety wise and stuff on these things?
I don't think they do, do they?
Not that I've seen.
I I think we have to do our own.
Get your own vest.
Outer, yeah, yeah.
I think that's a good idea.
I would wear.
They do that in many?
Absolutely.
Looks more professional.
I say as large as you guys are, you must do it.
And safety vest we must have anyway, right?
The company he's.
Yeah, we do, yeah.
That's what I was gonna say, yes, that's good. I have no trouble with that. Get a motion from the board to approve that, so.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So you're basically gonna have eleven uniforms, is that what you're saying?
Well, no, um it depends. Probably, uh I I gotta call them and see. We did eleven, you know, when we did them, but we worked seven days a week too versus working five days a week.
Winter's coming. You could be seven days a week.
Well, yeah, I know, I know.
I think there's some options there too. Some guys may not want a button-down shirt. They just may want pants and a jacket, which would make a lot less money.
That's what I say, yeah. You gotta find out. Um how many pairs do you get up there?
I don't know, I couldn't tell. I'd have to look.
They supply their own boots and stuff, the steel-toed boots?
We do.
We do.
We do, yeah.
We do that already.
We get a hundred dollars a year for boots and shoes.
I guess what I would say is, I'm I'm agreeable with up to eleven pair of what what they need so that they're basically, you can basically put clothing on eleven people even though you know you don't because half the time they're out being clean. I'd rather do that than not have you.
Yeah, that's why I do it because you can, you got five and five and then you got one spare.
Just in case somebody tears something or.
Oh, you got different sizes too.
Yeah.
You and Chris are not gonna fit into the same.
No, definitely, definitely.
But that's where I'm at the boards. Okay, I did ask for the ayes, right? Alright, moving on. What else you got for us?
That's about it.
We're agreeable tonight by the sound. You sure you ain't got something else you wanna add?
Wow, wow.
Now that I put it that way.
Now that you put it that way.
One question, did you guys get the flyer on the training, the snow and ice?
Yes.
Training, okay, I think it's.
They were.
Wilmington?
Upstate somewhat.
There's one right here, right here in southern Vermont. It's in.
I just got them, actually, just opened it.
Yeah, I think Wilmington or Wardsville, I think a one-day class.
Yeah.
Those are real good classes.
Now, we've asked people to ask us, is there a motion for the the board to allow these people to take these road courses they need to take?
Well, I think it's up to Joel. I mean, it's a winter, winter, snow and ice removal class, one-day class.
Well, there's a lot of them. Um the one I'm gonna ask you about was Blacktop, you know.
Sure, what? Okay, yeah. Well, and I can see, we'll give it off to you guys too, so it's.
Right, right, right.
Okay, yeah, just let me know. It worked well the other time. Just send me something and I can look at it. I usually look it up and then I.
Those are, they're free too, I believe.
We're also, yeah, except the one you give me there, right, she was thirty dollars.
Yeah.
Monday, everybody's gonna take off because of hunting season versus tomorrow. So if anybody's.
So they're gonna work that and stay and take Monday?
Yeah, yeah, because of deer season, yeah. And I think a couple of the guys are gonna be out tomorrow, actually.
Let's hope they don't get a snowstorm.
Well, they will come back. Good bunch of young, good bunch of guys. They will come back.
I hope they get a chance to go hunt.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I think we'll be good tonight. We're supposed to, when I come up, it was drizzling. Let's hope things, ground's not frozen.
On the high ground, yeah.
It's gotta turn a little white for Saturday.
It's gonna be cold, boy.
Yes, it does.
It doesn't have.
Ronnie, a little white Saturday.
Yeah. Don't need much, just.
No, just, just enough to cover the ground.
Alright, anything else?
It's coming. We are good.
Alright, thank you.
I thank you.
Okay, moving on. Senior Citizens Group ballot article voter approval appropriations.
Thanks again, Joel.
This is to do with.
Sorry, I didn't know you were looking at me.
I know.
You couldn't, you were right.
I was waiting until you were done writing.
I know, I'm like, what? Uh you asked for this to be on the ballot.
This is, this is the one, this is where.
Senior Citizens Group ballot article voter approved appropriations. Each year, the senior citizens have a ballot article in the amount of three thousand dollars approved by the voters. When, when they decided to dissolve, they, the last remaining member went to the bank and closed the checking account and the monies that were left in there from the taxpayers was put into a check, brought to the town office and given to the treasurer. She has been holding it because no one has given her instructions as to what to do with the check. Now, last March, um again, another ballot article was approved for the senior citizens in the amount of three thousand dollars. So I would normally be cutting that check for the seniors group the third week of December. So now that you have um turned the building over to the school, there are still ongoing expenses associated with keeping the building for the winter, electricity, some heat. And I guess that's the purpose of deciding this evening how those monies will be handled.
That, that, yes, and I think the members of of the school board will be coming in and asking some specific things about that and some lands that they own, like the ball field and the rest at one of the meetings. She'll probably call you and wanna get on the agenda to do that.
I I know the the check that was turned over was in the amount of two thousand eight hundred ninety-three dollars and five cents.
Okay, they have two electric bills so far. Uh and basically from what Cindy's talking, I think the school, they really wanna winterize this place, turn electricity off and winterize it. So they're gonna try to get ahold of someone in town to do that, that they hope, he'll say yes and see what it costs.
I do know the insurance, according to Betty, was paid through March, the building insurance.
Yeah, so what they're looking for is, is there's a couple electric bills and whatever other bills that might be there.
What's gonna happen to sewer tax on that?
Well, that's the question. Does the school?
This is, this is what I've learned from the um, from the listers. The senior citizens will be taxed for the building if circumstances are not straightened out by equal first.
Yeah.
So.
My concern with with taking the check that Ellen has now is that, does that, does that put us in a situation where we're where we're responsible for the building?
That's what I'm concerned with. I think, I think the current funds that Ellen has, which is already was the citizens and they had their own checking account because they gave the checkbook and we gave the checkbook to the school. But when they tried to write a check, there is no money in the fund, funds. That's how they found out that the check had been withdrawn and given to the town. Uh what we probably, I would recommend is it's that money be turned over to the school. The other ballot article where the three thousand dollars is currently, I would hold up on. I would recommend that we don't pay it at this time until we see whether they take ownership, don't take ownership. Sounds like they've done it.
Well, I think it's.
There's no group to pay the money to.
And they've, they've, they have, they've dissolved, so there's, there's no one, there's no one for us to write a check to. But I think that, I, I think you're right. The money that we receive, the check that Ellen has, we should be turning that over to the school.
And let them pay the bills.
Yes.
So somebody's gotta pay for the sewer too, right, in that building?
Well, the bills are theirs. The bills are theirs. They need to deal with what the bills.
Goes to the school.
See, we need to clarify that, sewer people. Because when the person who owns the property is charged for the sewer connection, not the building, property.
Right, I thought we discussed this before.
I mean, we should be, and we're supposed to be the sewer commissioners.
Right.
So we gotta make up our mind, look at, are we gonna, uh, cause I know that the woman that owns the property doesn't want that building, period. That's why I wanted to go back to the school. And this has been dragged down quite a while, you know, the school don't want it, we don't want it, nobody wants the liability and I don't blame anybody for that.
Well, the the school was gonna give it to Bennington if the vote passed because it would be, all school property had to go to that one board. But basically that didn't happen, so.
That's right, but we gotta take and like, well, the person that owns the property asked me and I said, look, I'm just a board member of the select board. That's all I am, nothing else.
Yeah, I think it's a good question for the sewer commission. There's, at a meeting with Darcy and to put a formal motion on the table and and close it out. Cause that's where you have to do this with the sewer thing. You can't do it at the select board level. We have to do that as sewer commissioners.
Even though they're all the same thing.
I know, I agree with you.
What I'm saying is, we ought to do something because.
I agree. I think, I think.
We can't keep sending bills and the person wanting to, you know, wanting to refuse to pay the bill and this and that. We gotta do something one way or the other.
We can have, if the school owns it, fill out a decommission or have her fill out a decommission. We'll figure it out and decommission it because we're still allowed a couple more before the year's up. That way there, if it's decommissioned, nobody has to pay a bill.
I'll see that.
But I, but I think that's a sewer, I I I know we're talking about it, but it really, we can't make the decision with our hats on as selectmen.
Okay.
Not legally doing it.
Make it tonight. That's why I was just bringing it up, so we should address that.
Well, I agree.
The next time we go down the other end, we should address it.
Could you have Darcy put it on her agenda and talk about?
We've just been waiting to be able to have a meeting to do this.
Yeah, so we can have a decommission discussion on that building. If the town needs to make out a decommissioner, if the school does, let's get it done and then they can sign it.
But we've just said there's no meetings for the sewer board for the next two months.
They can have a special meeting. She can, doesn't have to be on her week. She can call on a Wednesday, just like we do. Commissioners are in charge.
Ask her, ask her when, if maybe we can figure out a date when she comes to the meeting next week.
Yes.
Because the board is asking her to come here.
Could we do it a half hour before the meeting, before our regular meeting?
We have to get the decommission made out.
Oh, I see.
You gotta, you gotta, you gotta talk about this.
You know, so I I would say it it doesn't hurt to tell, tell her that because I think she doesn't care what day we meet.
No, just after so that we can, we can work with her to.
Do a special meeting and do it.
Do a special meeting.
That's the way I would handle that. But back to the question on the monies that we have. You're making a recommendation or a motion to.
I'll make the motion. We, we turn that money over to the school, what was left of that checking comp, seeing they have the checkbook.
And who, get a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Further discussion? This is to pay for the bills and the and the things on the building that's there.
Yeah, it's not our money, so I think that we shouldn't have it, so it goes to them.
Yeah.
As long as we're doing it properly.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Okay, and let them know that the, the bills they're concerned with, that they, they can use that money. Pay off the electric. I know she has two electric bills now. Uh and if, then she also has money so she can contact somebody to sort of winterize the place, do what she needs to do. Okay.
I'll talk to Ellen. I think probably, I don't, I think the check was made out to the Town of Pownell, so we'll probably have to deposit it and then redispers it.
Yes, it could take a week or two.
Yeah.
It's alright. I'll try to remember to tell the person it bugs me and you can let the school know, give them a memo or something.
Yeah, when we actually send the check.
Okay, discontinued roads. I see you gave us some paperwork.
Yes, so. Yes. So I'll reiterate, I've been working with Paul, and we have already come up with the notice, the, the date, the 30 days, the warning. I have all the, um, certified mailings all ready to go for tomorrow. If we can all agree that we're gonna make a formal motion tonight, as required by the law, that you're going to discontinue the two roads as Class III highways, and then, and then from there.
Is that what this notice of a hearing, discontinued town highway, I'm supposed to read off?
Yes, it is, but first of all, before we do anything, we're gonna make the motion that you're gonna, a formal motion to begin the process to discontinue TH, um, 32 Lavina Road and TH 61 Renner's Drive as Class III town highways. That's your formal motion. That's what it means in your notice by motion of the board.
Okay.
Okay?
Uh, I, can someone make that motion, uh, as, as read? So all you gotta do is make a-
I made the motion as read.
Get a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion on that?
Yes. At what point are we going to try, I, I guess my concern is, um, how much money are we gonna allow? If we go to court for one of these, are we gonna set a cap on how much money we're gonna spend in legal to follow through with this?
What makes you think you're gonna go to court?
If someone, if someone, if someone, um, grieves it or doesn't approve or wants to contest it.
When we get to the road-
You're, you're talking, you're talking way too much about this before, before we've actually done a site visit or taken any testimony or anything. Your purpose here tonight is just make your motion and follow through under the guidance of your attorney.
Sorry, you don't have the discussion.
Not be talking about any of this tonight, or at the site visit.
You're just looking. Okay, so I got a motion, I got a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and, uh-
Okay, now you can read your notice.
Notice of a hearing referring to discontinuance of town highways in Pownell, Vermont, pursuant to the provisions of 19 BSA Section 708A. The Select Board of the Town of Pownell, on its own motion hereby, gives notice in accordance with 19 BSA Section 709, that the Select Board will meet at the town office in Pownell, above a place in the town at 9:00 a.m. on December 9th for a site visit, and then recess to the town office for the purpose of receiving testimony and hearing all persons interested in the matter of whether the Town of Pownell shall discontinue Highway 32, Lavina Road, and 61 Renner's Drive. If after examination of the premises and hearing any and all interested persons, the Select Board judges that the public good, necessity, and convenience of the inhabitants of the Town of Pownell require that said highway be discontinued, it will be so ordered. No damages are available for discontinuance of highways or trails dated at the Pownell, Vermont, this 9th date of November 2017. Get a motion to sign that?
Yeah, I make the motion, we sign it.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Have you got an official one you want us to sign?
Yes. I'm gonna put it right in the owner's letter, right down there. So we'll keep it all together.
They can start signing right from that end if they want, bring it up. Okay, what else we got on discontinued roads, anything?
That's it for tonight, just marked on your calendars that your site visit is December 9th.
December 9th.
9:00 a.m. Meet at the town office and leave from here.
And you'll email us a reminder as we get closer? Thank you. Now, the next thing we have on here is the large gathering ordinance. Uh, we've had this for a while now, and people have looked at it. Uh, the one thing that we don't have with this ordinance at this time is the fee structure and penalties, and, uh, there is a sheet that can be added to say what those are.
Can we get that one signed and then?
Is it part of the procedure that we have to meet together and go to the site together?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, you have to meet here at the town office, open your meeting, leave, go to, do your site visit, and as he says, you don't, you don't discuss, take testimony, you're looking for-
Reasons-
Visually looking at what you're doing. The distance, what you see, and you come back, and any of the interested parties, they also be at the site visit, that's the purpose of it, and when you come back to the building, anybody that comes back, if they give testimony, you have to take it, they have to be sworn in, and in the event there, there is no one, then it, you write your decision. You write down the reasons why you're going to discontinue it, and then we will forward that on to Paul, who will formally write it up. And then send it back, and we have 60 days to take care of all that process.
Okay.
And I did also check into some maintenance issues that we had discussed about the bridge. Everything's good.
Yep, now we're, we're, you know.
Yes, so I, I also have, when Nelson and I were working on this, I didn't realize that he had two different ordinances that he was looking at from different towns, so he sent me one from the Town of Georgia, and I had converted it for Town of Pownell. It is way longer, lengthier, very complicated. However, in it is a page that, um, talks about some fees. And if you wish to look at that, we can just look at that page.
Can you make some copies of that?
I have, I have not paper for everybody. I just didn't want to mix it all in, because I think really for Pownell, you might want to go the, the one, the smaller one that already has forms for us, and you not overdo it.
We can always change this at a later date if the smaller one does go-
You could always, you know, if there was something in here in particular-
We can modify it, anything-
This is only your first read, okay? You can even have a second read on this before you make a motion, before we put it on, on a future agenda that you're gonna adopt it.
That's right.
Because when you make your motion to adopt it, that's it, we put it in the paper, we do the 60 days, it's done. So you can look at it tonight, you can take another meeting, we can put it back on the agenda. So you don't have to feel that you have to rush through this, because when we rush through things, they never come out good.
I doubt it.
The page that you want to look at as I pass this, actually, I'll just turn it right to the page for you, because it ends up being the last page, so run if you, just pass them down.
She's gonna give you a copy, everybody's gonna-
Everybody's gonna, they're gonna get one, but I just want to get the page for you, so I'm not moving around a lot of paper. Maybe it's not necessary to have all those fees. However, the second one, it doesn't go into a lot of explanation. The one that, that I was looking through from the, the Town of Georgia, which this one was modeled after, the one that you're looking at right now, um, I think they had a fee, initial fee was a non-refundable, the permit fee, Section 9, permit fee.
Yep.
Um, a non-refundable application fee for a permit is $250 that shall be paid at the time of filing the application. What type of fee, if you use the, the shorter version, what type of fee would, would the board put in there?
I think we should go with the fees that's, that's on this, uh, I-
We're, we're in this one here, Nelson, we're in the second one.
I think what, uh-
Is it asking for the fee?
It isn't, that's what, we would have to add to some of these sections, I think, is what happens. The question is, should we do that, or just do this?
I think you should add a section, if there's nothing in this one here talking about what it costs for a fee, I mean, I don't care what you decide for the fee, that's what the board does, but put a section, permit fee.
Oh, okay. So, so the, so it'd be 350 people or more would be the, would be the requirement for the fee? Or the requirement for the, for the permit? If it's under 350 people, they don't need the permit?
That's what I'm saying.
In Georgia.
Okay.
Town of Pownell, it says 200.
Well, the other one is, the other one said 200.
You're trying to, you're trying to merge two of these at this point. That's why I'm recommending that. This be a first read, and, you know, if you see something as you're reading the one from Georgia that you might like to slip into the other one, like the permit fee, you should charge something.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I-
There's, there's a cost of handling and processing.
I'd like to challenge a mount, because in this 2.1, you're saying 200 people. I have a liquor license that says I can put 300 people in Legion. So now I gotta apply for you to do that inside the building?
Not inside the building.
Yeah, but it doesn't clarify that anywhere.
Go into Section 3, purpose, potential to create a significant traffic, noise, sanitation, safety.
Which one are you at?
Yeah, you gotta, you gotta-
You're right, I'm sorry, I gotta go back to the other one.
We're just talking about it, you gotta, if you're going back and forth.
Just look at the front cover, what's it say? It's regulating mass gatherings, special events, that's the, the one from Georgia.
Right, okay. So the one from Pownell broke down.
Which town did you take, though, the one that you have, Nelson? The first one.
The first one actually came out of a, a town that wasn't in this state.
Okay.
It came off the, either Portland or one of the, one of the coastal's, uh, towns that was having extreme trouble with their not having it, when I read the article. This is, this, this-
This, this one here from Georgia, they had, there was references made to marine and things of that nature, so I took that out of there, I'm like, oh, they must be somewhere around lakes, water.
They are around water, they are around water.
Coast Guard, that kind of stuff, so I was taking that out.
Now, when I first did this, it was years ago, the, the, the one that says Town of Pownell, and I couldn't find any. But since then, if you look at these, uh, they're fairly new for these towns. And basically, I'm, I looked today, and there's actually three more towns in Vermont that have ordinances for this gathering now. So it's probably become something that, uh, more towns are addressing.
Kind of like the Georgia one, because it's more detailed, and we can add or subtract anything.
Well, I think that's the, what we have to look at.
Does it talk about who enforces it?
It would be your sheriff department, and the ordinance is not done by, it's done by police, it's like writing a ticket.
And I liked Bruce where it says, "The title of this ordinance shall be Town of Pownell, regulating mass gatherings and special events."
Yeah, and I don't think they're looking at-
Not in Georgia Legion.
And, well, and I think that the key that, to answer Bruce's question, are we looking for this to be outside occurrences, or are we looking at this for anything inside buildings too? Uh, because, come on, we had weddings that were large, that used to hold-
I have weddings that over 200.
Yeah, and what if you-
I had a funeral there that had over 200.
Yes, so basically, I'm, I'm thinking if it's, somehow we have to talk about, uh, what do we, uh, how do we want to handle this?
We've had other people come in and tell us that they were hoping for 200 or 300 or more over on South Stream Road, that one they were going to do.
The Alps.
And they got 50.
And they got 50, but they were hoping for-
Oh, yeah.
And, you know, we, we have to give them the ordinance we have, and if they pay the 250 bucks and they only get 50 people, that's their, their problem, but still, we have to go with the information we're given. And even down to the racetrack, I mean, there's a building down there.
Potentially, they could have an event in that building, it would hold quite a few people.
Sure.
Absolutely. I mean, that's a pretty small number, a couple hundred. That ain't a large gathering in my book, but, but, I mean, I don't know what, what the thing should be. I mean, there are some places where they have parking, they got all this other stuff.
Usually, you're like a building, like the racetrack, you gotta have, right, to have so many people in there anyhow.
Well, you do from the state, if it's over 2,000.
Should we increase that number to, from 200 up to-
How about the motorcycle thing we just had this summer? How big was that?
The what?
When they were the motorcycles and everything.
Oh, down in North Pownell, I don't know what that was.
How big was that?
Well, they, they expected 500 when they came in.
And then you got at the town fair, you got 300 to 400 down there.
Yeah, well, and people, people, we got people that come in now and ask us.
Yeah.
To have those sort of things, and, and we, we've agreed to them.
Your last one asked for 500.
Yeah, but, but the, and we're, and we're okay with that, it's just that, again, I'm not looking for this to be, no, you can't have this, what we're trying to do is make the citizens aware of the town, that this is occurring in our town. Uh, if you don't like the band that's playing, we're gonna authorize, it's okay, you have an option, shut your windows or-
Yeah.
Leave town for the day, whatever, you know, but, but if you know nothing about it, and you have a cookout planned in your front yard, and all of a sudden, you got, uh, a lot of the Blues are playing down there, swearing like crazy.
Yeah.
You're just trying to warn people, I, we're not trying to punish people so they can't hold things, but what we're trying to do is get information out to the public so they know what's going on in our town.
Right.
That's really what the ordinance is for.
Is this ordinance for events that, that people are being charged a fee to go to? Or is this like, if you want to have a big party, you say you're having a graduation party or something, or?
I would say, I would say, in my mind, it covers both, because both can be a nuisance. You know, I've seen some graduation parties that have gone astray, it didn't cost anything.
What if you're gonna have a wedding at your house?
You know, weddings and so forth.
Yeah, but it says a group of 350 or more, it's a pretty big wedding at your house.
Yeah, but, you know, people have, we have people up on Carpenter Hill and Eltoya that are holding these things.
Exactly.
But they've come in and asked for their liquor license.
They've had some big weddings around.
Yeah, which I-
Put that ten out.
But that, but I think that's, take Carpenter Hill, I'll pick on the people up there. If you've got a party that's going on with 350 people to 400 people, the traffic is gonna change on that road.
Definitely.
And if you don't tell people what's occurring, I think that's what we're, we're trying to do. We're trying to make an awareness to the public, what's happening in your town at that day or time. We're not trying to say to the people that own their home that they can't perform the function. And that's why, when I look at this, uh, one here that talks about definitions permits and so forth, and when you go down to, uh, you know, I'll say Section 7, approval standards, on this one, it gets pretty strong. It pretty much, and I'm gonna do it on this, Bruce, because if people have to conform to everything that's listed here, there might be some things that, uh, could go astray at that party, that doesn't meet these requirements.
And again, I think it comes down to, so are we gonna, are we gonna, we're gonna, uh, are we gonna have to pay a sheriff's deputy? have to pay a sheriff's deputy, go over and check, make sure that these are all, make sure all these things are...
Well, you have set approval standards here, listed in this one, okay? What we've done in the past is we've come in and asked the person what they're doing and then we either say yay, you can do that, and no, you can't do that. And in our agreement to let them do that, there's minutes that says, "No burnouts on the town road," okay? And things of that nature, which leads the select board based on what the activity is to set the standards for that day. Where when you previously set all the standards, this is more like a bylaw that says, "These are the standards in order for you to hold this event." And is that really what we as a town want to do at the beginning of this? Or are we more looking for, as I said earlier, providing information to the citizenship of what's going on? And we, it's our job to make sure that certain standards are met for whatever the activity is. Motorcycles make more noise than a car show. That's what we play in, where if you want it to be an ordinance for sound, that's different, that's different than this. So, that's my mindset anyways, I don't want to be so restricted that nobody can get a permit. So I would look at the two of them, I like the fees that's in this one. The fees and the fines, I think is a good...
So this was the Georgia one? Yes.
Yeah, yeah, so I think the fines and fees are good. I'm not necessarily crazy about the approval standards in that one. Okay, so, you guys can, so what I'm hearing is, I'm going to sit here and debate it line by line tonight.
No, I want you to take it with you because that's why I called this a first read.
Good, I agree, that's a good thing.
So I would take these away, and if you go to the website, you actually, if you do large gathering or assemblies, search for the state of Vermont, several towns will pop up that have these.
What website, the Vermont League of Citizen Towns?
No, just go on the web.
Vermont.gov?
Just go on standard Internet Explorer, whichever one you use.
Look on the first page, the first page of the one, Nelson's version, right there. First page down at the bottom.
That'll take you to the state assembly that the state has. But what I'm saying is, you can go on Google search and say, "State of Vermont Assembly Permits" or "Large Gathering Permits" in quotes, and it will show you towns that have them. And I found at least three or four today besides the Georgia one. When I searched for this one, this was the only one, it popped up back when I sent it to the board.
I was so confused, Nelson, because I was like...
Well, I saw this and this was so much more restrictive, I wanted the board, and I'm glad you brought it out, I wanted the board to look at something that was much different than what we were looking at and trying to put up. Because we as a Town of Pownell, much smaller than this, we're not around a lake or any of these places where you got summer activities that are way beyond what we do. And I can understand why they might be more strict because they probably have a ton of these things occurring, but we're lucky to have one a year.
Sure.
And that's what it was designed for.
Potentially now, we have that thing on Jackson Cross Road now where there are regular events there now.
Well, he's got to come into each event, he's got to come here, so... And that's...
But again, I think you get into the whole thing.
I say he has to do that, in reality, we don't have an ordinance that says he has to do it.
Right, you're right. And eventually, I think you could get into a situation where who's going to go and make sure they have, if you tell them you have four, what if they only have, you know, that's going to...
Well, if you look at what the one that I had, I had specifically where the sheriff has to sign off, the fire departments have to sign off, the rescue squad has to sign off, the sheriff will be the one that's looking to make sure it verifies because they're part of that process.
And they're going to verify that their insurance document is...
Well, that's, they have to supply to us.
They have to go with your...
It should come in with your permit.
Right, so whose responsibility is it to call to make sure that's accurate, you know what I mean? It's a...
We, when they provide that to us, we're approving this permit, so it's our job to make sure we have the correct information. You know, if they put down that the fire department has been seen and that fire chief hasn't signed off on it, it's our job to tell them we need to see the sign off on it. A policy, if they say they have liability insurance, they need to show it to us just like they do when they bid on doing the road. We'll see it, we'll see the date when it's in effect and so forth, a copy of it has to be attached.
A lot of times, the insurance company won't give you a policy, they'll send it now, just so that you can't play a game.
So the one from Georgia, when it's talking about violations and enforcement, it's considered a civil matter and it'll be enforced in the Vermont Judicial Bureau.
Yeah.
Or Superior Court at the election of the select board.
Yeah, if we wish to prosecute. Yeah, because usually what happens is this, the same if a dog officer writes a ticket or something like that, it comes down to, do we want to pay him to be in the court? Do we want the person to come in and pay what they need to pay? Same goes a lot of times with zoning. We want the person to do the right thing, we're not there to sue them for huge amounts of money.
So the Town of Pownell's select board chairman, or they're designated, shall be authorized to act as the issuing municipal official.
Yep, based on the approval of the board.
To issue and pursue complaints before the Vermont Judicial Bureau.
Oh, yeah.
Pursuant to Title 24.
And which one are you reading? And which one you're reading?
I'm reading the restrictive one for enforcement.
Yeah, you're reading the one from...
I want to know about enforcement.
You're reading the one from Georgia.
This is how it gets enforced.
Yes. Yeah, so he's going to commence a civil action, which basically means he's going to, somebody to serve, they have to serve a notice, which is usually the sheriff. Has to revoke the permit too. Is authorized by law. Chairman not being a law enforcement officer can't do that, but he can have the law do that by telling them to do it. On behalf of the town, in other words, you pay a fee. So, you got material to read, guys.
Step one.
Well, seeing in the one, the other one, when we were talking about the private party on private residential property for 200 or more people not covered by section 2.1, is required to notify the select board at least 30 days before the event, you hear that?
Yeah. Not a week before.
Yeah, not a week before, yes.
Yeah, but, and again, that's why we're trying to put something together so that we do have something for people to come in and tell us. At the moment, we really don't. The only thing we have today is if you're over 2,000, that the magic number for the state police, 2,000.
Yeah, 2,000.
They will come down and enforce and make sure that you get a permit and do your thing.
Once again, the one that you gave us, Nelson, is still a civil matter in courts in accordance with the provisions of Title 4. And those penalties, civil penalty of not more than $500 may be imposed for violation of the civil ordinance. And the waiver fee shall be set at $400 for the first offense, $450 for the second offense within a six-month period, and $500 for all subsequent offenses within a six-month period. Each day the violation continues shall constitute a separate violation of this ordinance, and that's very similar to what was in this one. Almost, probably almost exact. $800 a day, yeah, it is. So it is a civil matter, it will go before...
The courts.
Judicial Bureau.
Yep, your sheriff will serve and end up...
So do we, is it worth it to ask Chad's input?
Does it hurt?
They are your law enforcement.
So, well, maybe our next step, once we can narrow one down that we like, maybe then we can send it over for Chad to look at.
Yep, that's why I was saying we don't have to move so quick.
If you read your contract with Chad, what he talks about is if you have any ordinance or anything of that nature, you have to provide him copies.
Yes.
In his contract so he can enforce. So basically, whatever you come up with an ordinance, you've got to make sure he has it, or otherwise, he won't even know he has to enforce it.
And then I'm sure there's a fee, then he's going to incur a fee to us for that.
Well, the fees are going to be whatever he charges per hour, then if he has court costs, you're going to, you know, post fees when he's in court, you're going to pay the fees. That's what we paying for. Trouble is, it'll be more hours than the 26 you're getting a week now, but...
Well, we're going to be getting less patrol time and more court time.
And you're getting more.
Yeah.
It depends on how many minutes we get going.
And like I said, we don't do a lot of these a year, so I'd like to step lightly and put something in place that we can sort of grow with. And that's what I'm looking at versus having it so restricted, nobody will do anything or think they can't do anything and they'll do it.
This would be on the high end and this would be on the lower end, in my opinion.
Yeah, so let's sort of try to find where we want to be.
Come in the middle somewhere.
Because we have to put fees in, we don't have fees in one of those, and we need to address it, I guess. Okay, any more discussion on this? You guys can go away and read. If you wish, Linda has both of these electronically, if you wish to have electronics copies sent to you, and you can move things about, cut and paste. And if you get through that, I can certainly get it to them.
You say, Lon, you want that electronically?
No, I'll look it over myself.
Yeah.
Because I'm fine with that. I think we ought to make a, you know, make a moderate plan and stick by it and see how it works. And we can always change it.
That's right.
Later on, if they have views or whatever, or we don't get the right results, well, we have to change it.
I like this because it's got something to fill out for emergency services, it's got basic information.
Yeah, important things. You know, you've got to be safe and you've got to be, you know, that's...
This would have been good to have in place, like John came in for Jackson Cross or Burke came in for...
Car show.
Car show.
It's, yeah, it's, I tried to keep it as simple as possible, but yet have forms that you would have to have.
Well, we should have a standard thing, so if somebody's going to have a gather and here's their ordinance.
I don't want it to make, I don't want it to be a burden either, I don't want it to, you know, I want to encourage people to have the events like they had in North Pownell with the bike race. Those are all...
Be good for it.
Yep, that was another good example of if we had this because they had emergency services there as well.
Yeah, I think anybody that's putting on the shows regularly like they did there in North Pownell, they do it all over, they look at this and, bang, they just follow the steps and come in and say, hey, here it is, and go, because that's, they're doing that. And I say that the same thing happens when you have concerts or different things that people are holding all the time. They're looking for, hey, how do I get permission to do this? And I'd rather that we be consistent every time versus one day we do one thing and the next day we do something else.
Yeah, we can't do that. Then we'll have everybody confused.
That's right.
They didn't let me do that, they didn't let me do that.
That's right. Okay, moving on. Okay, we already did a thing for the town administration job, personnel policy, and we had legal. Need a motion to go on executive session for legal.
I'll make a motion to go on an executive session for legal.
A second?
Second.
I'm going to go to the bathroom. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, okay.